Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for January 27th, 2020. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Mr. Urban?
Present.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Dozeman?
Here.
Ms. Hulteen?
Here.
Mr. Stites?
Here.
Ms. Hoppe?
Present.
Ms. Nosler Beck?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Counselors, before you, you have the minutes, council minutes for January 13th, 2020. If there are no corrections, we will let the minutes stand as presented. I see no objections, so they will be stand as presented. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda. We are now at citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, and you can sign up here. I have two people signed up so far. So when I call your name, if you'd come to the podium and adjust the microphone so it's comfortable for you, and then give us your name, and if you'd spell your last name and your address, and you'll have three minutes after then. First speaker is Bill Powell and Kate Cook on deck. And I think, before you start speaking, Mr. Powell, I want to announce that we also have a special study session after the regular agenda, the regular council meeting, and I will take study session comment on study session agenda items directly after our citizens' right to speak. Thank you. Mr. Powell, please proceed.
Okay, my name is Bill Powell at 4110 Uplum Street. Recently, I was at the Department of Public Works to amicably resolve a fence issue with a neighbor. And while I was there, I was told by the Department of Public Works that I would be losing the front 16.5 feet of my lot, my lot to increase the right-of-way. My four-year-old sidewalk was also deemed substandard. This is the sidewalk that I poured in April of 16 in accordance with my building department approved drawings, and it was inspected by the right-of-way inspector, and all of a sudden it's substandard by these notes. This aerial photo of my house came from the Department of Public Works. I'll be losing 1,090 square feet of my lot, and this is the lot I paid $9 per square foot for in 2014. So I, by what authority is this happening and why, and why only to me? Some of the other notes on this, "The existing substandard public improvements lie within private property rather than the public right-of-way." Well, my sidewalk is entirely in the existing 10-foot right-of-way with 1 inch to spare. That's it.
Mr. Powell, these seem, thank you very much for coming and telling us about this. This is a little bit more detail than we're really prepared to handle on the dais here. Have you, have you been able to speak with our community development department?
I've gone there, I've gone there to get clarifications on this that they gave me, and it was interesting, the first time I went, I put this down, and the person I was, said, "Where did you get that?" I said, "What is this, secret?" And, and you're correct, there's a lot of detail here and a lot of explaining, but the property lines follow where they used to be, except for mine, which jogs in now the 16.5 feet. You know, Mom always told me I was special, but I didn't realize how special, that this is happening only to me so far.
Mr. Goff or Mr. Johnstone, is there, do we?
Yeah, we've been in communication with Mr. Powell. We'd be happy to sit down again and try to talk through this. And it's not, it doesn't just happen to Mr. Powell. This happens kind of throughout the city when there's right-of-way issues like this, but we'd be happy to have more conversations with Mr. Powell on this.
Mr. Powell, would that work if you were to sit down with Mr. Johnstone and his crew and try to get a better explanation on this?
Of course. I mean, maybe I'm dense, but Broselman, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Brosman, probably.
Yeah, and Steve Nguyen.
Steve Nguyen, yes.
Both. I couldn't get a satisfactory, you know, maybe I'm a little dense, but I couldn't get a satisfactory clarification about the ins and outs of all of this.
Okay, we'd be happy to sit down and try to, try to see if we can figure it out together, okay?
As a retiree, I'm wide open, anytime, any day, just call me.
All right, we have your contact information. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. And if for some reason it doesn't work out, you're welcome to come back and talk with us. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kate Cook.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm Kate Cook. I'm with Local Works here in Wheat Ridge. Our office address is 4251 Kipling Street, Suite 580. And I'm just here to personally invite you to our community open house coming up this Thursday evening at Cypher Specialties from 5:30 to 7:30. We are making a little bit of a change. It's a quarterly open house that we typically do throughout the year. In the past, it's been more just information about upcoming ways to volunteer in the community. We'll still have that piece, but we're also going to start including more information about what's going on in the community. We're starting off this time, the city has graciously donated some staff time to come and talk to our participants about what's happening in the community with respect to Gold's Grocery, Clear Creek Crossing, and then also the development at the end of the G-line. So we will have poster boards up asking people their ideas for future topics, what they're interested in hearing about. So really, a very community-based informal way to get information about what's going on in the community and also to meet and greet and talk with people. So just wanted to invite you. If you have any questions, you can check on our website, and thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak under public speaking. Is there anyone here who hasn't signed up who would like to speak at this time?
Mr. Mayor, Ken Johnstone, Community Development Director, too, would like to speak to the, to the Mr. Powell's comments, just so council is aware what's going on.
Mr. Johnstone.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just briefly, just so council understands a little bit of the context from Mr. Powell's concerns. When he came in in 2009, I think it was, to construct a new home on the property, he was required to install a sidewalk. Our standard at that time for a local street was a five-foot sidewalk minimum, and that's an ADA requirement as well. However, he was allowed to basically match like-for-like because there were three-foot sidewalks on either side of his lot. So it just seemed to make sense as a practical matter that the inspectors allowed him to build that three-foot to match like-for-like. There wasn't a requirement to dedicate right-of-way as part of a building permit process. That's not a trigger for right-of-way dedication. What Mr. Powell, along with his neighboring property to the east, who he backs up to, they're in the process of exchanging some property through a subdivision plating process. And the subdivision regulations, when you're in that plating process, require you to dedicate right-of-way to meet whatever the current standard is for your street. So, and actually, I believe that some of his existing improvements that are actually, notably the sidewalk that he installed, is not actually on his property. So it's, it's a public sidewalk, but it's in what we call a prescriptive easement. So he is being asked to dedicate right-of-way. Again, that's something we would ask of anyone who's in a subdivision process to meet that local street standard. What we're not doing is asking him to make any further improvements. We're not asking him to remove the sidewalk that we approved in 2009. So the only impact to him is really that he is being asked, required, to dedicate that right-of-way to the city, but it's actually right-of-way that he already can't use because it's encumbered by public improvements already. And as a side benefit, you know, there's a potential that this right-of-way that he can't use will result in a smaller lot size and therefore potentially, albeit minor, small reduction in his property tax burden as well, potentially. I'm not the assessor, but he will have a smaller lot area, which he already has, practically speaking, that smaller lot area to begin with. So that's kind of where we're at. It's, you know, they're in this subdivision approval process. It's an administrative subdivision.
So this was a process that he initiated, or at least participated in the initiation, and it wasn't some rogue inspector going down the street?
Correct, yeah. It's a, he was informed of these, of these things during a pre-application meeting, which is the first step in that subdivision process, and so that's where it came up. And he was told that the sidewalk was substandard, and I can certainly understand why he would perceive that to be an odd comment since he built it in 2009 and we inspected it. But it was just noted as an FYI that this is in fact a substandard sidewalk, that it should be five feet, but we're not, again, asking him to make any changes.
Thank you for your clarity. I would open it now to the public comment on any study session item that we're having tonight, and I don't have anyone signed up. Is there anyone here who is not signed up who would like to speak on the study session item? Okay, we will dispense with that. And with that, I believe we're at agenda item number one. Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent Agenda Item 1A, Resolution 08-2020, A Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 2020 General Fund Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation in the Amount of $36,268 for the Replacement of a Police Department Vehicle. 1B, Motion to Approve the Purchase and Payment of 2020 Vehicle Replacements and the Purchase and Payment for Installation of Lighting, Auxiliary, and Communications Equipment in a Total Not to Exceed $456,544. 1C, Motion to Approve the Purchase of Tandem Equipment Upfit to Auto Truck Group of Colorado Springs, Colorado at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $111,879. 1D, Resolution 09-2020, A Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Lakewood and the City of Wheat Ridge for Crime Lab, Crime Scene Services, an Authorizing Payment of $79,189. 1E, Motion to Approve Payment for the Purchase of a 2020 Caterpillar Backhoe to Wagner Equipment Company of Aurora, Colorado at a Total Cost Not to Exceed $124,239.03.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda, and a motion is in order for consent agenda items number 1A through 1E.
I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1E.
Second. Okay, Mr. Urban's got this one, and I know he's going to hold back on the next one. Is there any, or would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go to our second agenda item, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 01-2020, An Ordinance Amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to amend references to public works and community development departments, division directors, and staff, Case Number ZOA-19-05. At issue in November 2019, City Council approved an ordinance which effectively modified the city's organizational chart, moving the engineering division from Public Works Department into the Community Development Department. Moving the division transfers certain responsibilities and duties to the Community Development Department, and this ordinance updates the affected code sections to reflect the city's organizational structure.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It is an ordinance on second reading. It is non-quasajudicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and this is ordinance number 1863. Mr. Goff, is there any presentation on this? We've seen this before.
Yeah, there's not. The issue statement that Mr. Stites read was pretty self-explanatory, and this is really just a cleanup of the code to deal with some internal reorganization.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this at this time. Is there anyone here who is not signed up who would like to speak at this time on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and open it up to any questions from council. We don't really have much, so why don't we close the public hearing and a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 01-2020, An Ordinance Amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to amend references to the public works, community development departments, divisions, directors, and staff on second reading, and then it take effect upon adoption and signature of the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Before we do, I would ask the clerk to please clear the board. Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number three, Ms. Hoppe.
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we have a question from council. Can we please redo that vote? It didn't feel as though the board had cleared when we had pushed the button.
Let us clear the board, and I'd like to revote on the last motion, and is everyone clear what the motion is? Okay.
The board is clear.
Okay, the board is clear.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has once again passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. We may having a few issues with our buttons, but we'll get that figured out. Agenda item number three, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 02-2020, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Residential Group Home and Substance Abuse Clinic Zoning Requirements. This is an ordinance on first reading. At issue, the zoning code currently regulates a variety of non-traditional residential living arrangements, including group homes for the elderly and children, as well as treatment clinics. The code fails, however, to recognize certain types of arrangements, including group homes for disabled persons. The enclosed ordinance eliminates distinctions that no longer have a meaningful land use planning purpose and imposes neutral, non-discriminatory zoning regulations upon residential group homes for disabled persons.
This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing. A motion is in order, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 02-2020, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Residential Group Home and Substance Abuse Clinic Zoning Requirements. On first reading, order published, public hearing set for Monday, February 10th, 2020, 7:00 PM, City Council Chambers, and then it take effect 15 days after publication.
Second.
Second, Mr. Stites. Is there any discussion? Well, we don't take discussion. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our business portion of our meeting. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to speak to the closing of, unfortunate closing of our Lucky's Market here in Wheat Ridge. I know a lot of our constituents are very sad I was in there this weekend shopping, and it was sad to shop in there. Just felt like we opened that place, but there's a lot of factors that were out of our control for the closure of this. I think it's, it's been out in the media and the press that Lucky's Market lost their investment, investors' croakers, and, and they, they had to close a lot of the stores because of that. So, and unfortunately, our store was with that. We're still, I think Lucky's Market is still trying to figure out what they're doing. We haven't been able to have a phone call with them yet. Either the developer hasn't either, Wheat Ridge Coroner's. So we are investigating all the different contracts and leases that are in place. Lucky's does, Lucky Market does own the store, and the developer quadrant owns the property. So the city of Wheat Ridge does not own anything. We are contributing with a financial tax increment finance agreement that the Urban Authority entered into several years ago. However, that agreement is a reimbursement of sales tax and property tax increment, which means new sales tax and new property tax has to generate it from that project. So if there's no sales tax generated from Lucky's Market, there's no money for the Urban and All Authority to give to the developers. So the city or the Urban and All Authority is not losing any money because Lucky's has closed. Unfortunately, it's a revenue source that we will not have in the city for a short period of time. The city and Urban Authority is working, will be working with the developer and hopefully Lucky's to figure out how we can get that store backfilled as soon as possible. And I guess that's it. If there's any questions from council on that, again, we don't know a lot right now. We haven't had a conversation with Lucky's. I think, again, they're trying to figure out what they're doing. I think they've had some internal layoffs of their upper management staff, so not a lot of people to talk to at their corporation right now.
Okay.
And February, I'm sorry, February 12th, I think, they are planning for their last day, unless the shelves, their inventory has gone before then. Won a few deals, they are having 25% off everything right now. So, again, I was in there this weekend, and the shelves are getting pretty empty, so I'm not sure if they'll make it to February 12th, but that is what they're planning right now.
Ms. Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. We, I know a lot of folks up here have gotten questions about what's going to go there, and really good ideas as to what could maybe go there. I'm wondering if there's a way for, you know, residents to maybe throw out their ideas or where we could like share some of these ideas? Because when Lucky's opened, it was such a, you know, place, they had a community room, you know? I really feel like Wheat Ridge was all-in on this. And so I think that what we can do to make sure that whatever goes in to replace it, there's still that sense of community, would be great. So I think it'd be fun to get creative, maybe work with Steve on it or something.
Sure, we'll, we'll take suggestions, of course, and I've received emails. People have been putting suggestions on Facebook and social media. You know, suggestions are great, but it's, just because you want something doesn't mean it's going to come. There's been a lot of suggestions for Trader Joe's, which, you know, might be great for our community, but there's a lot of decision points that go into a company's decision to locate in a specific location. Lucky's, Trader Joe's has looked at the site in the past before Lucky's came, and they weren't, it wasn't a site for them, a good site for them at that point. Doesn't mean that they won't look at it today, and we will do everything we can to work with the developer and Lucky's to backfill that with something exciting as a Lucky's store.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like we've kind of opened a little bit of a can of worms here, but regarding the whole project, recognizing that the closure of Lucky's was really sort of a national decision by Lucky's chain and wasn't really reflective of that particular market, can you just maybe give a really quick update on what the schedule and timing is for the delivery of the residents that are being built there and some of the other commercial leases that are in play? Because I feel like, you know, Lucky's was an anchor that was really important for the overall site, you know, vision and what the developer was, was really working with the city on. So if you wouldn't mind just providing a couple of relevant details to that, it would be really helpful to understand sort of the magnitude of this.
Sure, yeah, and I don't know if I have specific dates and maybe Ken can, and help a little bit, but yeah, the residences are taking longer than expected, and a lot of that is because of my understanding of staffing shortages. They can't get enough subcontractors and contractors to finish that project. The, fortunately, the apartments, the West 38th Apartments at 38th and Uplum are just wrapping up. They're behind schedule also, but we had a tour of that facility last week, and they were talking about how difficult it is to get the labors in today's markets, especially in Colorado. So there've been, there's been some delays on that project. Ken, I don't know if you have any anticipation. I'm, go ahead.
Yeah, I, there were really, I think, two reasons for why that's been slower than maybe what we would have expected. One, their, their original structural design was kind of over-engineered in terms of how much concrete it was requiring. So when the contractor got on board, they looked at that and just kind of initially intuitively knew that that was a lot more structure, subsurface structure than was what was needed. So it was well worth their while, cost-wise, to get another structural engineer to recertify a modified structural plan. So that set them back several months. And then I think, you know, Patrick is absolutely correct in terms of the subcontractors. They're additionally challenged by the fact that their ownership group is out of St. Louis, and their GC is out of St. Louis. So I would speculate probably has a little bit of a disadvantage in terms of getting subcontractors in the Denver market. And then just for other updates on that project, Raising Cane's has been approved for a restaurant facility along Wadsworth, south of the existing retail shops, and their permits ready to be issued. They're just, the multifamily site has been given authorization by the developer to use their site temporarily as part of their material staging. So I think as soon as that stops happening, Raising Cane's should be under construction as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question on this is related to, the Lucky's building is owned by Lucky's, the land itself is owned by the developer, and Lucky's has a 20-year ground lease on the land, is that?
That's my understanding correct.
So is it plausible or legally feasible for the city to condemn that land? Or at some point, if this bankruptcy, which we understand today, they filed Chapter 11, goes on for a significant period of time, this could pose a serious problem for us? So is that a tool that could be used or would be used at some point?
We'll let the attorney speak to that.
Well, you can always condemn property for a public purpose.
But I guess, but before you go into that, the difference between the, could we condemn the lease versus condemn the property?
Sure. A leasehold is an interest in real property, so it's not uncommon to condemn an easement, and so not the whole fee of property. The city once upon a time condemned some restrictive covenants, actually, to clear the way for construction of a sound wall up at Applewood. Pardon me, so yeah, you can pick and choose what element of the real estate you want to condemn. It would have to be for a public purpose, and the courts are fairly forgiving about that if you've got a good case. The other way, of course, to do it is to go through urban renewal, but that would require a blight determination, something that I doubt the city would want to have on, even though we're just on a specific part of development that's pretty new, it might be more straightforward to just, just simply condemn the leasehold interest, which I think you'd be able to do if you were able to assemble the proper public purpose, other cities have done that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're watching this like a hawk because the various moving parts and the, the lack of the completion of the residential part of it, and this bankruptcy issue is going to, you can light as many candles as you want, but Trader Joe's isn't going to come in if this issue continues for years on end. So I just want to make sure that we're watching this as closely as we can, knowing that a lot of this is out of our control.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, the city attorneys' matters.
No report tonight, nothing to report.
Thank you. We'll start on elected officials' matters. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick announcement, we have received quite a few applications for memberships on our commissions and boards. Several of them were located today by IT in a spam bucket, and we have now corrected the flow that stopped some of those. It's always, of course, a balance It's always, of course, a balance between security of your systems and letting mail through and no matter what you do, you can't reach an optimum solution all the time. We will still be accepting applications until 5:00 PM this Friday, January 31st. So if anyone else out there knows of someone who might be interested or if you have spoken to someone who expressed an interest, please remind them to do that by this Friday and we'll proceed from there.
Thank you. Ms. Nosler Beck?
I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson?
I would like to salute Wheat Ridge High School girls swim team. They won their meet Friday against Green Mountain, yay. And to all the coaches, the volunteers, the timers, there's so many people there. At the rec center, it was really great. One other concern, a concern that I do have is the closing, possible closing of Jefferson County Fairgrounds. That's got a lot of different businesses there. We've got the CSU Extension, Master Gardeners, 4H, Forestry, Weston Aires. And if there is any, like, fires or floods, people can bring their animals to the fairgrounds to be taken care of. It's been there for 100 years. So there is a possible meeting tomorrow. I left a message with the commissioner's office today to find out about public meetings. There may be one February 4th. I did not hear back from them, but there could be one tomorrow about only partially leaving the fairgrounds open for equine. But I seriously think that losing that is going to be huge because CSU Extension, if you're interested in horticulture, you know, animals, anything like that, they run out the big arenas for Jefferson County Action, Jeffco Action, semiannually for their sales and all the benefit goes to their programs. There's craft fairs, antique fairs. There's supposed to be a state conference there this August for gardeners. So it's huge. If you're concerned about the fairgrounds closing, get ahold of the commissioners, write emails or else get ahold of CSU Extension and find out. They know when some meetings are going to be there. I'd hate to see the extension lost with everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Great community asset. Ms. Dozeman?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that Girl Scout cookie season is coming up and I know a dealer if you need one or 10. And it's a great opportunity to support the girls in our community and there's plenty of Girl Scouts running around selling them, so just keep an eye out for those. And then on February 18th, Uncle Julio's hacienda Colorado will be opening. One of my best friends from high school is the general manager and he gave me a sneak peek of it, which was, I've never seen a brand-new kitchen like that. It was just amazing. And they make everything there from scratch and it's a combination of hacienda and Uncle Julio's. So they have a great outdoor patio and it'll be an amazing asset to the city. So looking forward to seeing everybody there.
Looking forward to that then. Thank you for that update. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Nosler Beck was just whispering in my ear. She actually had something she forgot to mention. Is it okay if I pass to her? And then I'll take the baton back because I have a few things. Is that okay if she mentions her thing?
There will be a fee for this, but yes.
All right, still figuring it out.
Your colleague is healing the floor.
I just wanted to invite everybody to the fundraiser at Wheat Ridge High School on Wednesday, the 29th, at 6:00 PM for their after-prom. I'm going to be cooking up a batch of chili. Encourage everybody else to cook up a batch of chili or come and eat and make a donation for $5. Thanks.
Thank you. I've had her chili. I highly encourage you to go. I have two quick things. First of all, I just want to thank the city and our consent agenda. We approved the purchase of multiple hybrid and electric vehicles to replace non-hybrid and electric vehicles and I just want to call the city out for its commitment to sustainable practices. It's exciting to see that that's something that just happens and we don't have to make the case for it up here. So thank you. I also want to make mention that on February 6th, there is a community meeting at Wheat Ridge Recreation Center about the proposed art space project. And this is a really important opportunity for our community to come together and learn more about this, this program, which would create affordable housing for artists as well as artistic creation space. So again, that's February 6th, which is, I believe, a Thursday at Wheat Ridge Recreation Center from 6:00 to 7:30. And there'll be lots of good information, but it's my understanding too that it's an opportunity for the community to share what they think about this project and learn more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of announcements. First of all, if you can believe it, it's going to be February. We're thinking about gardening and everything else happening in the city and I just want to remind everybody that we have a fantastic resource in our city called Happiness Gardens. It's a multi-plot community garden and this year there will be two different-sized plots that you can choose from. So if you're interested, if you want to garden around others, if you want to grow some local food, I really encourage everyone to go get a plot at the community garden. It's a great asset. The second thing is, speaking of growing local food, there will also be Jefferson County Health, Public Health, thank you, thank you, is sponsoring a night. It will be on, in the Lutheran atrium on February 20th and it's called Health From The Ground Up. It will be all of your local farmers. I'll be there. And many other farmers will be there for choices in, if you don't want to grow all your local food, you can, you can come meet who is growing it and selling it around the Jefferson County areas. So there'll be lots of representation, there'll be a free dinner, just lots of fun things and you'll get to meet your farmers.
Date, time, and location again?
February 20th, in the Lutheran atrium. There'll be signs, we'll go up to the second floor. And, and the time is 6:00 to 8:00, thank you. And I'll keep talking about it as we get closer to it. It's 5:00? Thanks. It's 5:00, 5:00 to 8:00.
Very good. And that's sort of meet your farmer.
That's meet farmer and learn about local food.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you to Ms. Hutchinson for bringing up the Jefferson County Fairgrounds. Our county treasurer, Jerry DiTulio, has let me know that that meeting is tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Jefferson County Fairgrounds. So if you are interested in being a part of that discussion about the future of the county fairgrounds tomorrow night, 6:00 to 7:30.
Thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Hutchinson also and our, you know, this is partially, I'm sure, driven by the budgetary concerns that our, that our county, our county has. We've had to shelter or shutter one, one floor of the, of the county jail. And so I know that the county is seeking ways to balance their budget and this may be part of that, but I think they would certainly appreciate a lot of citizen input into the decision-making. I think most public officials like that. So with that, unless there is any more business to come before the council, we will stand adjourned. We will adjourn then and we'll take about 10 minutes or so until about quarter till the hour and then we will reconvene and study session.[1135.83] till the hour and then we will reconvene in study session.[434.63][434.63](Loud clapping) I'd like to call to order the special study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for January 27, 2020. Our, I would like, we have already taken citizen comment on any, any items, so we have dispensed with that item on the agenda. And item number one is delegation of our 2020 private activity bond cap to Jefferson County Housing Authority. And I will go to Mr. Goff for a report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this evening, we have with us from the Jefferson County Housing Authority, Lori Rosendahl, Executive Director, and Julie Stern. Both her and I think half of you have met them and seen them before. And, and so, for half of you, this is, is, you're very familiar with this because we just discussed this project and this topic last fall. And the Housing Authority has come to us again and asked that the City Council consider allocating our 2020 private activity bond allocation to Jefferson County Housing Authority for the Caesar Square project. And I'm going to let Julie explain private activity bonds because she does such a great job with it. But, but yeah, I'll just turn it over to them so we don't waste time and let them talk about this project. It's an exciting project in Wheat Ridge, renovation of a apartment complex into an affordable housing project and infusion of over $10 million worth of investment in our community. So, who would like to start?
Sure. So, I'm Julie Stern, Director of Development with the Jefferson County Housing Authority. So, to start with a little bit of background on private activity bonds, these are different from the general obligation bonds that you might be more familiar with. So, with a general obligation bond, the issuer, the local government, sells the bond to bondholders, uses that revenue to do a government project, and then the bondholders are repaid with the government's tax revenue or other revenue. So, it's really the government that issues the bonds that has the credit risk with a general obligation bond. With a private activity bond, the issuer issues these bonds on behalf of a private entity that is undertaking a qualified activity. And in our case, even though we are a fellow government entity in this structure, we are the private entity. And the qualified activity that we're undertaking is building affordable housing using 4% low-income housing tax credits. So, the way that the private activity bonds work is rather than the issuer selling the bonds to a bunch of, the public, a bunch of bondholders, typically, the government sells the bonds to a bank. So, it's, it's known as a private placement. And then the bank uses those proceeds to make a loan to the project. And from the bank's point of view, it's the same as any other kind of construction loan that they would make or a permanent mortgage. And all of the credit risk is with the private entity. So, the, the bank has no obligation to pay back the government entity. It's the private entity that has an obligation to pay back the bank. And it's the revenues from the project to be constructed, so our rental revenues from the affordable housing that will repay the bank, who is going to use the private activity bonds to make a loan to us, hopefully. And the most important thing about private activity bonds is that anytime you use 4% low-income housing tax credits to finance an affordable housing project, you're required to finance 50% of the project costs using private activity bonds. So, the reason that we're back after having been here last fall and received the City of Wheat Ridge's 2019 bond cap is that we were able to bring more sources of financing to the project and increase the amount of work that we were going to do, that we are going to do. So, at that time, we were considering investing about $6 million in the property in hard costs. Now, that's up to $10 million. Since the overall size of the project has grown, that 50% of the project cost has also grown and we need a little bit more private activity bond cap to support the project. So, in addition to Wheat Ridge's 2019 cap, Jefferson County also assigned their 2019 cap. So, they were really pleased that we had a local match and that we're all working in partnership. And this is just kind of the last piece we need to fall into place to put together our financing.
The real exciting part about this, too, is we, as a community, Wheat Ridge, we get our own allocation of private activity bonds. We're a large enough community and it's based on, the amount we get is based on our population. And we've, we've always received around $1.5 million, $1.6 now. The exciting news is ever since I've been here for 18 years, we've, every year, we've been giving this money back to the statewide balance or to CHAF or the Metro Mayor's Caucus. They use them for good, good purposes, but it's never been invested directly into our community like this. And when Jefferson County Housing Authority came to us last year, we, I was very excited. I know Zach, because Zach's on the Housing Authority Board. This is the first time that we were able to utilize these dollars in our community and this is, this is awesome because we haven't been able to do that, so.
Ms. Stern, or are you doing more work at the project or enhancing more units or how would the money, how will the money be used?
So, yes, we are investing both inside the units and kind of the outside of the property. Inside the units, there's 108 units. We'll be doing kind of a full remodel inside, so new kitchens, new bathrooms, flooring, paint, and fixtures throughout. A lot of the units have their original early 1970s cabinets and countertops, so it's a, will be a very needed investment in the interiors of the units. And then what we're really excited about is, although there's 108 units, none of them are currently wheelchair-accessible. There's no units with step-free access. So, we'll be creating six units that are fully ADA-accessible and we'll be constructing a new community building that will have an accessible leasing office, accessible laundry, and a community room for the community to gather.
Great. And can you talk about the affordability and how affordable they are?
Um, yes, so, we'll be restricting the units at a mix of income levels that more or less reflects the folks that are living there now. We're hoping to keep as many of the current residents in place as possible, although, you know, we'll be coming through with a major construction effort. So, there will be units ranging from 30% of AMI up to 60% of AMI. And just to give you an idea, 60% of AMI is just under, Patrick's going to check me.
I do.
Just under $40,000 for a one-person household, up to high 50s for a four-person household.
Yes, 55, yep.
And there will be a few units restricted at 80% AMI and that's just because there are some folks living there who are at that income level and that will allow us to not have to displace them.
Thank you. Questions of Council?
And also, I think one thing that we didn't mention, it's in your staff memo, we talked about this last fall, but this, this property, although it currently has a lot of lower-income residents, it's not deed-restricted for that purposes. Using these low-income tax credits will require that the property is, is deeded permanently for affordability. Am I saying that correctly? So, I think it's for like 40 years or something.
50.
50 years, so. And I know the mayor's been preaching this and we've, we've been hearing this in the community that residents have been asking us to at least maintain the affordability that you currently have in your project. So, this is, this is a great example of that.
Great. Questions of Council? Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you. I don't really have a question. I just want to say I'm, I'm very grateful that this, that this project is happening in our community. And one of the ways to, to address affordable housing in your community, one of them is maintaining it, like Mr. Goff just said. And so, I am so happy that we're going to be able to make this reinvestment into our community. And I most certainly support assigning our private activity bonds to you guys, so thank you.
Ms. Hutchinson?
This is kind of new, but can you tell me, who owns this? Is it Jefferson County Housing owns the whole place?
Yes, Jefferson County Housing Authority owns the property now, the entire corner.
Okay. Also, can you define AMI?
It stands for area median income. So, it's an income level that is set at the county level. So, there's that median income for Jefferson County for each household size and then the maximum income for units is a percentage of that median income.
And I drive by those apartments twice a day, weekdays, taking kids to school. So, I do see that people are living there and I think that'll be great because there's some kind of more fixed-up places that are at, near there. And I think this will be a good investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Holtine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo Councilwoman Hoppe's expression of excitement that this is actually happening in our community. Thank you. Should this move forward, what is the anticipated timeline for commencing the project and the broad range of maybe when it would be completed?
We're anticipating a construction start in mid to late April, hopefully. Our general contractor is telling us three months per building. There's some asbestos mitigation, so it is going to take us a little longer to move through each building. So, that would take us to just about the middle of 2021 to be finished.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then, I've looked at the site plan and I realized it's not particularly detailed, but a lot of people who are living below, you know, 60% AMI depend on public transportation and active transportation and that site is right on the Jefferson County Bike Way. Are you going to be providing secure bike storage for people who live there?
We are providing bike parking, certainly. We haven't talked about secure bike storage, but that's certainly something we can talk about with our design team and see if we have room to fit into the scope.
Wonderful. If you could take a look at that, just because secure, you know, it's something that's actually like in some sort of secured locker or corral area is substantially more secure for people than outside, just locking bikes up to some sort of fixed thing. So, if there's any possibility to include that, I think it would really enhance the mobility for the people living at the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Nosler Beck?
Hi, Julie. Just wanted to have you explain a little bit more about what the displacement for current residents is going to be like and, and what we're, what you all are trying to do, what you all are trying to do to accommodate, to make sure that they can come back and stay there and it's still their home.
So, there will be a small amount of permanent displacement for two reasons. One is there are some folks living there who earn over 80% of AMI, who just won't qualify to be part of an all-affordable project. And there are, we're going to need to have one building empty at a time, again, because we have some significant asbestos mitigation, so it's just not really safe for us to go into units more patchwork. We do have some vacancy on the property now, so we're hoping that, that the displacement driven by that will be minimal. But for those folks who are going to be permanently displaced, we'll be following Uniform Relocation Act guidelines. So, they'll get assistance with their moving costs, access to advisory services, and then potentially eligible for any differential in rent at their, at their new residence for anywhere up to 42 months, potentially. And then for the folks who are going to stay on the property, we're really just going to be working with the tenants on a household-by-household basis. You know, three months is a long time to be temporarily out of your unit, so we're hoping to kind of move folks into units as they're completed, but it's, it's going to, there's going to be a really big spreadsheet. But we're, we're meeting with people individually and working on making sure everyone's needs are met and their housing situation is at least as good as it is now.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Additional, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the staff of the Jefferson County Housing Authority for all their work on this and the residents that I've spoken with are excited about this project. And so, just really appreciate all the work that the city has done to allocate our private activity bonds. And as Mr. Goff mentioned, the ability to use these funds within the City of Wheat Ridge is, is critical and it is something unique and that other cities have not been able to do that. And more recently, we've been able to partner with the Jefferson County Housing Authority and I would encourage us to continue to do so because it is a very fruitful partnership and I appreciate all their hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see if we can have a consensus to assigning the city's private activity bond allocation to Metro West Housing Solutions for the renovation of the Caesar Square Apartments in Wheat Ridge.
You have, looks like we have consensus on that to move forward. So, thank you very much for, for coming again tonight. We're happy to work with you and look forward to having your project in our city.
Great.
And we have this on, we'll have this on the February 10th meeting. It requires a public hearing and it's done by resolution, so we'll have it on February 10th.
Thank you very much. We will now move to staff reports. Mr. Goff, anything for us tonight?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And any from our, from our elected officials, any, any last words for our audience?
Community garden.
We're getting community garden, but other than that, I think we're getting a nod to, if we are done for the evening, let us adjourn and we'll go home. Thank you.